Here second.
Second.
Second by Erica, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. And that was approved or taken. Next item is financial report for water and sewer. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Got a motion by MC, do I hear second?
I'll say it.
Second by JJ, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed like sign. That's. Next item is the October Fire Department report.
The only thing I really got news is we got our brush truck here, we're getting it in service. We've got a new pickup truck for medical calls, we're getting it in service. And then we've got a trailer for Swiftwater operations, we're getting everything into it. And so that's about it. Any questions? No new news on the building or personnel or anything like that?
I was gonna ask, it's like something.
I'll try through that.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks. Next, what is your?
Business as usual. You guys have all the stats in front of you. Nothing really new to comment on, other than we have something on the agenda. But until we get there, we'll talk about that. But any questions?
Next is the planning commission.
Good evening. The planning commission met last night for a work session for this month. But a few items on the agenda. One was the preliminary plat for the Trillium subdivision out of Murdoch, still working on that. Very close. We've got just a few minor things. Honestly, probably anticipate them getting some sort of conditional approval, you know, early next month. So we have a conditional use for a Pediatrics Plus. This is a kind of a children's therapy center that's wanting to operate out of the Legacy Baptist Church. They have a permanent structure under construction down in Elm Springs. And this is something they do in multiple communities, kind of all over, I don't know, the state, area, whatever. But top rate on the property that's, you know, zoned agricultural and the church is temporary use. They had to go through a conditional use process. So no real issues there. It's honestly something that going forward in the future, when we look at like the zoning code stuff like that, it's something that we'll probably try to hone in on, like allowable uses within a church facility, church grounds or campus. So it's definitely been something that has been interesting. We've got the Summerlin Village, large scale development that was just submitted for this month. So that is the property at the corner of Ford and two sixty-four that we approved the PZD on. So they've submitted their site development plan and building plans. And that is in the review process. We haven't had any major discussions with them yet, but it's here and we're working on it. And then the only other thing is we had our twenty twenty-six planning commission meeting calendar for next year. So we had that set up. Obviously, there's no items for y'all this month. And then under the general updates, we did meet with the watershed about the legacy project that we're gonna get for next year's CNU. We're having a meeting also this coming Friday with the actual CNU Legacy Project Board. It's a Zoom call, it's kind of our first preliminary meeting with them, kind of to start that process. Really looking forward to that. We've got a meeting tomorrow to continue to work on the zoning code with Garber. And, you know, we're still working on the active transportation plan, incorporating the downtime master plan, things like that. But if y'all don't have any questions on all that, obviously, you know, you see some really pretty trees in here. We've got lots of stuff everywhere. And I have the professionals that would like to just give you that big on Christmas cave. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Hello, I'm Madison.
What is Stephanie?
I'm part of the events committee this year for Christmas in Cave, which will be December sixth from ten AM to three PM. So we're gonna briefly describe what we are offering this year. So inside the community building, we will have a photo booth coming in for pictures of Santa. The backdrop actually is what you're looking at for what the photos will be with our banners you see hanging around as the logos. We also have face painting this year that will be coming inside the community building. And we've partnered with Early Advantage Preschool, who would like to come and do crafts for the kids, as well as contribute and volunteer and be a part of the event. So we very much appreciate them. And then in Joy House, they will be open with hot chocolate, coffee and all the food, as well as the Grinch. And he will be walking around throughout the event and the end of it, but he will be stationed at Joy House for the beginning. And then with the watershed, we've also partnered with them. And they will have live music, hot chocolate bar, and the Master Naturalist are coming in to do crafts for all the kids, which will be pine cone, pine coated bird eaters.
We have some really great success this year. The vendors, the applications have been pouring in to the point that we have kind of busted at this means. We have a waiting list of people that would love to be involved in this year's event, which means that next year it's gonna be even bigger and better. So it's exciting to see all of the effort that the events committee has put into this so far. We have ninety-two vendors right now, and we have four food trucks that will be there as well. So it's gonna be a very huge, community-involved event, and I think it's gonna be pretty successful.
So do you have any questions or anybody that'd like to know more about the event? We'd love to see you all there.
So I had brought up a little earlier, we sort of planned to do this last year, but, you know, we had talked about potentially doing something where the council would kind of cycle in and out, and maybe the mayor could capture him to be over at the law firm to just kind of say that constituents can come in and talk to people and ask questions and stuff like that. We had sort of planned on doing it last year, and then I think it was just like a week before that I came up with the idea. So I thought, you know, maybe this year, if you guys would want us to do that, then maybe a good opportunity for constituents to come through and ask questions about things that are going on. You know, not on a weeknight or something, and you know, actually come out and get some face-to-face time with us. So we'd be happy to host that.
Okay.
I didn't even know that Early Advantage was doing that, so that was pretty surprising.
Yes, I know with your partner.
That's exciting too. So anything you need to help?
Perfect. And yeah, if you wanna reach out, we can chat this week, and we would love to include you guys in the law firm, whatever you guys wanna host.
For those of you that are listening at home, online, if you're also curious about some other fun things that are happening on December sixth, Nelson's Hardware is going to have an area beside their store with a petting zoo and some kid activities. And they're all gonna be candylanding, which is gonna be really fun for the littles.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, one more question. Are you gonna post this on the website?
Yes, ma'am. I just sent out all of the stuff to vendors today to finalize the vendor booths, so that we can... I'm printing brochures also to give out to the events with everyone's booth number coordinated with their spot inside the tent. So I'm waiting to confirm after everyone's paid and everything's assigned before I print those brochures. But I posted on the Facebook, and then I will get it posted on the website within the next week.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next item is Water and Sewer Department report.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
We can go over open work orders first. We have one active leak that we know about, and then the rest are setting leaders for builders. We do have a repair water service line, so we fixed it. It's not leaking, but we're gonna go back and replace it because it was in bad condition. Job openings, we have one job opening. I've been doing a bunch of interviews for the past few weeks, and I think we found our guy. So I'm gonna extend the job offer tomorrow. So hopefully we can get that filled.
That's the same one that's been open for a little bit?
Yes. So going over the water loss report, we dropped from fifty-four to fifty-two, not much of a drop. We did get Alton, the main line. So Alton actually didn't have a main line. It was a spider web of service lines, and it was all that black HTPE, which is notorious for breaking. I actually spoke with Rogers this past month, and based on their internal calculations, it was two hundred fifty percent more likely to break than any other material that's used between our two cities. So that is another thing that's worth looking into. Eighty to ninety percent of our service lines that we find breaks on are that material. So that's an avenue to chase if we'd like to preemptively replace service lines made of that material. The other things that I discussed last month was we know where the galvanized is in the city, or at least we think we know where all of it is. We have a plan in place to replace that by hopefully mid-year next year, because we still have probably three quarters of a mile of it, one half to three quarters of a mile. So it's a big undertaking, but we think that we can do it. It's budgeted for. And then as well, so a few months ago, I mentioned the cast iron line that is leaking at the bells on Main Street. That is going to be replaced by the RDOT utility relocate. So just an update on that. The let date for that project is May of twenty-seven. That means we need to have our utilities out of the way by that let date. And with how big of a project it is, it's likely gonna take around a year. So we're hoping worst case will be May twenty-sixth when we go to bid that out. Hopefully sooner, but that will kind of be when we start to replace that cast iron that's leaking at the bells. And I did a calculation, and there's a lot of speculation in this calculation, but if every bell was leaking one gallon a minute, which it may be leaking more, it may be leaking less, but that would be eleven point two million gallons of water loss, which is more than half of our water loss. So hopefully we'll see a big chunk go away with that water line gets replaced. Any questions?
Could you make this bigger, like to fill the whole page?
I can look into that, yeah.
Okay.
There was a few recommendations that we got that we discussed in the goal orders.
With the McKim and Creed study?
Yeah.
So, yes. Obviously, water loss is a complex issue. You've got the materials are obviously failing, but you also have some variables that we can control that we haven't, which are air and pressure. We're hoping to have that water master plan completed by the end of the year, early next year, which will give us a good idea where we need to put pressure relief valves and air leak valves. When I was speaking with Rogers, I asked him, you know, what is y'all's average pressure throughout the system? And they said sixty, sixty to seventy. We're sitting, depending on who you ask, probably around one forty to one fifty, so double. And then we've got areas that are, you know, two hundred. So if we could get that under control, it would make leaks a lot more manageable because it wouldn't just be fixing this leak and then you tighten up the system, pressure goes up and you bust somewhere else. So.
And that would be leading to some of that. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is the engineers report.
Kind of a couple of watershed projects. The backup project, we're currently working on a much greater closing task with the funding agency. And we'll be back before you possibly next month to do a couple of those tasks that may require council approval. Deconditioning of your existing water plants and associated tanks that's still under way. We're over fifty percent complete on that, but it's moving forward to. The state aid overhead project, if you've not had an opportunity to build a base name, we'll take a look at that project. It's much wider, it's going to the basis now. I don't know when they'll be in the paving, but I would say anytime of the homeland, and then they'll follow suit here on the community door. We've got the West Wallace Road and Sand Road project, we did it last week. That's on the agenda today to afford to the low bidder. And it's actually well, we're doing the grant from received. Just to note, the low bid was four hundred sixteen thousand five hundred twenty-six dollars and sixty-one cents. You have a grant from Ardon, it's an eighty twenty grant. So eighty percent of that's three hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven eighty-four. Gives you a total project value of four forty-eight. So, you know, we've got some lead weight and ability payout, but based on a max match, twenty percent. The city will be responsible for just under ninety thousand of that cost. And I know the traffic signal continues to be in the corner of everyone's mind. The last update and confirmation, which we've been almost daily coordinating with the contractor, they have us on schedule for the first week of December to drill the Peter Store light bulb foundations. So that's what we're trying to do. Last of the block loss range regulations and recommendations that we talked about, how we have a meeting scheduled with Mayor, General and Adjustment, the Thursday afternoon. Couple things we want to keep, some recommendations, primarily there's some legal questions that we have that we will make sure we have a change in the recommendation, how far out we require all sign improvements. And even with the, I just wanna have a discussion about stats, you can make sure we're comfortable with any of these extra things we're talking about, and whatever we have to have with staff to cover some of these issues. With that, any questions?
Thank you. Next is the engineers report.
Okay, good afternoon, good evening. I'm gonna bring up two things to talk about on this, to give you all an update on the fire station location. We, the city earlier this year filed suit against the contractor because of the issues with the roof. And contractor turned around and brought in all, pretty much every sub that worked on the project. A couple of items have been addressed already by the subs. Example, that would be the shallow floor issue. We kind of have a situation where there was a major issue with the roof. And then there were some smaller issues that occurred in the end. Our belief is that the contractor left before addressing those. Some of those smaller items have been taken care of, some of those are still outstanding. But with regard to the roof, earlier this year, the city hired a structural engineering expert who went upon the roof and wrote us a report. And essentially called out insulation error with the materials being oversaturated, oversaturated when they were left out of the rain. And then also some other issues with the installation. The insurance company for the contractor has also hired an expert who has looked at the roof. They have been pointing towards design issues. We've looked at that, and their design issue that they pointed to has to do with whether there was enough ventilation of the roof system to get moisture out of the roof. We've looked at it, and while there may have been a design issue, it'll be just the cause of the issue that you see with the way the roof. Nonetheless, since they are pointing towards a design issue with the architects, we were compelled to bring the architects into the location. And we've had order just recently, we have been working with the architects on this issue. And they have been good to work with, but ultimately, you know, the city needs to have that provision of the foundation fixed. The parties have expressed they'd like to go to see as settled as possible. The insurance companies have expressed desire to see whether there could be sort of a cooling from different insurance companies to get enough to see if we could fix the roof things that they wouldn't do without the architect at the table. So that's happened. So I suspect in the next month or two, I'll be able to update you all on the progress of settlement. My expectation will be that we'll be settling efforts along the mediation. At some point next, next block loss, to see if that could get done. So that's what we're having in the fire station location, just wanting to give you all an update on the toll money. If there's more information on the Summerlin or Jalen, although I said there are tolls, we'll be updated on that as well. It's kind of a very concurrent. Are there any questions about the fire station location?
Is there a estimate on the cost of maybe standard or if it's fixed?
I think there's been some general Walmart's chief, like your chief, you've talked to Susan about that maybe here.
No, we haven't seen it yet. I've not got an estimate.
I've been told both ways, hold off and then no, so not officially.
I just, I wonder if you go over the settlement, we'll have to have some.
Yeah, we will. I don't know if, I've talked to Susan about it, I'll have to get an update from her on that particular thing. I thought she told me the number, but I don't wanna throw it out here.
Yeah, I've not heard a number because we were, I think we were waiting if we were gonna have to do a total tear off of the whole building, or if we were gonna be able to patch it. But I think the last I heard is that it's gonna have to be a total tear off and redo the decking, because it's all through our roof, it's just not here and there.
Mark, I'll note that.
Yeah.
On the other side, you'll note that there's later in the period of the meeting, there's a right-of-way vacation with IRWP. The city's also received another right-of-way vacation application that we've talked about before from a property that's more close to here on Midway by the Haney's. It's a bit of a kind of archaic process, but there are actually two different processes in the statute to handle vacation of right-of-way. In other words, when the city's gonna give up right-of-way, these are areas that were planted for streets a long time ago that were never used as streets. And if the city's gonna give that up, it's a process you have to go to. There's one process that is in the statute within fourteen fifty-four, one of four, and allows that to be done by the city council. That process is used when the right-of-way only abuts the requesting property. So in this case, IRWP surrounds that property. We've been working with them for quite some time on this issue, they requested the vacation. And so that goes through a particular process that's rather straightforward, where we have a board and some city council votes on it. It gets a little more difficult if there are other letting property owners to the right-of-way. There's a difference, a whole different statute that says what we do. It's later in the code, and it requires a petition to be filed for letting property owners to sign off on it. And then there's a process by which at one city council meeting, the council has to set a public hearing at a regular city council meeting like we're at tonight. And then at the next regular council meeting, we hold a public hearing, and they need to adopt the ordinance to make it. So it's confusing, and, you know, here we are with two different samples going on at the same time. But I've got, I've received the Haney one. It looks to be everything that we need to have to go forward on that. What we need to do is at this meeting, have a motion to set the public hearing at the December sixteenth meeting, which is your next city council meeting, which is a reminder. I'll notice that and compare the ordinance for the work session. That'll be, I don't know what that is, but.
The ninth?
The ninth, December ninth. And then we'll hold a public hearing on the sixteenth, and it'll be considered a warning at that time. So it's confusing, and, but I just wanted to make that sort of clear, in case you might be scratching your head about two different, two different processes. The reason why the Haney one is different is that there was a letting property owners. And they have a big process for letting property owners, actually. So you have to go through this sort of formal process of not only getting your sign on public, but also having a public hearing and following the procedure that's in the statute.
Well, the public getting the education, sorry, the public getting the education goes up by you now?
Yeah, I'll say that. What I would ask for the councils is to make a motion to hold the public hearing for the Haney, for the Haney application on the December sixteenth.
I'm entertaining that motion now. Second. I'm making a motion. Okay, can I ask my?
Second.
Second, but I take this second option. My motion back, because I'll accuse myself of canceling my client. Okay. Yes, I was gonna ask for that.
Well, I'll, it, two things to do that, we won't have a broken up court. But I, this is just a separate public hearing, it's not to vote one way or the other. It's just a procedural thing, so.
It depends on that.
Right, I don't, if there's any conflict there, it's a statute requirement, we hold a public hearing for these, for these applications. We just need to set that, and so if it doesn't say one way or the other.
Second, I'm actually the attorney for the Haney's, so just to close it there, I'm gonna matter. But procedurally, I think it's fine to set the hearing, but, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to get, we'll have to get Morgan Mike here.
Yeah, neither do you know on the word, but yeah, we'll be able to proceed that way.
So I'm making a motion. Okay, the motion is made by MC. Second by Erica. Do, all in favor, and in this case, let's go ahead and show hands. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, it's unanimous, it is approved.
And this is the public hearing report on the Haney property.
The Haney property, which is two right-of-ways.
Not, not IRWP, only.
Only the Haney's.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Are we going to vote that night as well?
Yes.
We would vote on it that night as well?
Yes.
So we would need to make sure that.
There's gonna be, there'll be ordinance, and I'll have it for you at the work session, so you can look at it beforehand.
Anything else or new?
That's all I have, no further questions.
All right. Thank you. Next is the clerk treasurer's report. All right. And then the mayor's report, I will be very brief, but I did want to announce, we, he just mentioned that December ninth is our regular work session date, and so that's not changing. The December sixteenth meetings, because following Tuesday is the Tuesday before Christmas. So that will be on the sixteenth, and that will be our regularly scheduled voting meeting for December. And the next item is public comments. Do we have anyone that wants to make any comments? Hearing none, we'll go on to the follow-up. And I will say, we've got a little bit to report on drainage. The, we have a drainage project that's underway up in, oh, Wellington subdivision. And we have one that we're working on. We actually have a couple of them we're working on. The end of Fields Lane, there's an issue with water line from Springdale we're looking at. There's one that is for Brown Road that we're getting a little bit closer on, making some decisions there. And then we've got one that we didn't think was ours, and we've had a policy, but somehow the wording got changed, or not changed, but the wording was missed on a plaque. The Allen's Mill ditch and drainage area, it flooded a little bit in the last spring, and it was, or last big flood. And it's been determined that that's ours, so we're gonna be doing some work on it as well. So that's kind of our current drainage update. I have a question. Yes. So on the store water management manual, what do we have? Because I know we had a few recommendations in the past few months now, I'd like to know what we had on this.
That is all we're meeting about, third to the afternoon, and that will be presented in the work session next one.
Thank you. Next item is the resolution to waive competitive bidding and authorize the system for the police department for phasers and cameras. Do I hear a motion to approve? So we got a motion by MC, do I hear a second? So, got a motion by MC, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, white sign. That is approved. Uh, what is the number?
Twenty twenty-five dash fifty-five.
Next item is the resolution authorizing the uh approval of the low bid for the uh sidewalk contract for Wallace Road Sidewalk. Do I hear a motion to approve this move? Thank you. Got a motion by uh JJ and a second by MC. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, white sign. That was approved. That'll be fifty-six. And the next item is the uh, to vacate that small piece of property to the Illinois River Watershed. The uh, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules in place this on third and final reading by title only? Got a motion by JJ's, do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, it's motion by MC, seconded by JJ. Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica? Yes, MC?
Yes.
JJ?
Yes.
Do we have the ordinance number?
Twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Yes, sir.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, City of Cape Springs, they have Arkansas, ordinance to take a fourteen zero four acre portion of right-of-way located at Washington Street, City of Long Island.
Do I hear a motion to approve? So, got a motion by MC, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. Any discussion? Roll call.
Erica? Yes, MC?
Yes.
JJ?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Alright, that was approved. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Got a motion by JJ?
Seven.
Thank you. Second by MC.